All right, good evening. Today is Monday, November 15, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to enter into the meeting? Cynthia, second. Laura, all in favor? All right, first order of business is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it is concerned, coordination, unity, God, individual, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with comments by the board. Go around. Cynthia, you want to start?
I don't really have much. I mean, I'm looking forward to, and I'm sure everyone is, spending time with family during Thanksgiving. That was a nice time of year, and also during Christmas. And I guess everyone should just remember that there are some people out there who are not as fortunate as you all are. So I will try to keep that in mind during this time of the year and give back as much as you can.
All right. Thank you. Laura?
I'll keep it short. Hi, everybody. So the, just a couple things. The Facility Committee, I believe, met between our last meeting and this one, correct? So just a quick update. The Facility Committee met, and we discussed the timeline, the applications that are being filed. Every dozen thing seems to be on track. And, you know, just a couple, they're meeting with other groups and getting input from a lot of the teachers and administrators. So that's moving along very nicely. Very excited about the prospect of the coddle field being started in the spring with the completion in, I want to say, he said August, as a realistic-
September was like the, like drop dead date or something.
Yeah, yeah. So, and the supply chain and things like that are obviously on their minds, and so timelines are very loose, I guess, at this point, but it is exciting. I think the coddle field hopefully looks like it's going to be, and then the cafeteria they discussed, so that was middle school, high school, library. We saw the drawings of that. It's beautiful. So excited. So that's really some good news on the facilities. And I want to just congratulate the football team for winning their game, Section D champions. And all the other athletes, all the other athletes. It was a great season, and go Tuckahoe, go Tigers. So that's all I have to say.
All right, great. Laurie?
You said everything I was going to say, or at least half of it. So congratulations, Tuckahoe Football Team, wonderful. Keep up the great work. Moving on.
Yeah, that's great. I don't have anything either. I was going to say congratulations to the football team, too, but that's already been said. Yeah, just to echo off what Laura said, too, about the facilities committee, there was some, she alluded to it, but we saw at the last committee meeting, some updated drawings for the plans for this room, which were pretty, pretty awesome, and they were a little bit different from what was seen when we advertised for the, for the bond, and that that's because of the user group input and some changes to the original design, and the new design is really pretty cool. Got to share it with you guys. You guys haven't seen it yet, so it's pretty good. So, really exciting stuff.
It's going to be a really, really nice change, yeah. And then the way that the students can come from the cafeteria up to the library, they can go outside, there's going to be breakout rooms, just going to be such a great use of space, and really sort of contemporary looking, so it's going to be great, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be good. Okay, so let's just get in, get into the next, you want to do the liaisons now?
Yes, yes. So I'm very excited that we have two outstanding student liaisons at the meeting today who will give us an update. First, I would like to tell you about Michael Myers. He is a current senior at Tuckahoe High School. He is a two-sport athlete who gives back to his community through athletics and is a role model to all classmen in the school. Michael is currently working towards a 90 GPA, and he thoroughly enjoys all his classes, and his teachers say the same about him. Michael has committed to play baseball at Chattanooga University in Virginia, where he will continue his academic and athletic career. His goal is to enter the five-year program, finishing with an MBA in finance and economics. He is seriously thinking about going into commercial real estate when he graduates. Knowing Mike like I do, and he is truly an engaging and charismatic young man, he will be successful at whatever he pursues. Michael is known to everyone, pretty much in the school. He's very sociable, he's well-liked and respected by not only classes, classmates, but also teachers and administrators. He is a member of the National Honor Society and participates in voluntary programs to help the less fortunate. Michael participated in the Challenger Program, a baseball program for kids with disabilities. He would play with these kids on Sunday mornings. He also participated in midnight runs in New York City, where he would help give out clothing and food for the homeless. Athletically, Michael participates in varsity baseball and varsity football, and he has since freshman year at Tuckahoe High School. This season, Michael is a captain of the football team, and he plays running back on offense and linebacker on defense. His football stats for the year, I think I got them right, are 131 carries for 1,183 yards and 17 touchdowns. At Friday's game against Haldeen, Michael was awarded MVP of the Class D sectional championship game. As Tuckahoe football topped Haldeen to claim Section 1 Class D championship, Mike and the team played fantastically well, and I suggest anybody who didn't see it to watch it. Lo Hud characterized Mike's playing like this. He said, "Myers dominated, staving off defenders on his carries and clawing for extra yards with each rush to earn the game's MVP honor." Michael Myers is also up, I believe, for Player of the Week, Week 10, for Lo Hud. The article states, "In a wild game that featured turnovers lost by both sides, Myers gave Tuckahoe a stabilizing force. He carried 40 times for 352 yards and three touchdowns to fuel a 48-40 victory over Haldeen in the Section 1 Class D championship." Again, the senior was named this game's MVP. Michael was also All-State Honorable Mention as a sophomore on the football field, and recently, in the spring, was awarded Pitcher of the Year and All-Section as Junior for baseball. On the baseball team, Michael is a pitcher and bats top of the lineup, and I know he's going to do just as well as he did in football, so we're looking forward to that. Mike?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Myers. I'm a senior at Tuckahoe High School. One of the great things about Tuckahoe is the amount of teams that we have and the amount of kids that compete. We had 10 teams compete this fall. Varsity girls soccer played in the semifinal sectional game. They lost to Haldeen 3-1. Girls varsity volleyball made it to the section semifinal. They lost to Croton. The boys and girls cross-country team competed in sectionals, and we were fortunate enough to have five runners advance to the state scheduled for December 13th and Shenango Valley State Park. The football team, as Dr. Goodman just mentioned, they just won the Section 1 championship over Haldeen this past weekend in Arlington, and we will continue to play on the 19th in the Albany region. All winter sports registrations is ongoing on Family ID, and we have just started the basketball season outside. During the last four years, I was fortunate enough to be a part of multiple varsity teams and make some of the most incredible friendships and connections through athletics here at Tuckahoe High School. Tuckahoe Athletics is different from any other program. We have a smaller school, but that normally means that no matter how big you are, no matter how small you are, you can get playing time if you just give, just a little bit. This formed a very special bond this year between the upperclassmen and underclassmen on this team, and a lot of us are very thankful for it, not just me. Tuckahoe has been very successful in winning multiple championships in recent years as well, while also maintaining a very strong school spirit and a really good fan base. I've met so many great people and made so many great memories playing for Tuckahoe High School, and I'm just very thankful and fortunate to be a part of this team. And also the coaching staffs, with Coach John Diarcio on the football team, and now Coach Triglier are going to be coaching baseball, and looking forward to a very good season.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Ava Casaza. She's a senior at Tuckahoe High School, who presents herself as a role model to her peers, as well as underclassmen in both athletics, as well as academics. Ava has applied to 12 colleges and is patiently awaiting hearing back from them. Her goal is to major in business, as math is her best and favorite subject. Ava is doing exceptionally well this year and is maintaining a 97% GPA. Her positivity is infectious, and her teachers say that she is always a pleasure to have in class. Ava's talents extend beyond the classroom. Ava has been a member, actually Vice President, of the student government since her freshman year, and actively participates in organizing events for the school, as well as her class. Ava is a member of our National Honor Society, in which she is recognized for both her academics, as well as her community service. She partakes to give back to the community. Both her grades and her hours spent helping her community exceed our standards in every way. As part of her service to others, Ava is part of Cottle Cubs, where she pre-reads books to Cottle students, and in particular, read a book in Spanish to a student who did not speak English. She participated in blood drives and prepared food for less fortunate during the holiday season. Last year, Ava won the Harvard Radcliffe Book Award. This is an achievement award from the Harvard Alumni Association and is awarded to an outstanding high school student in their junior year, who displays excellence in scholarship and high character, combined with achievements in other fields. Again, we congratulate Ava for this most prestigious, prestigious award. Ava is captain of the varsity soccer team and participates in varsity basketball and track. She is forward on the soccer team, a guard on the basketball team, and competes in the 100-meter and 200-meter events on track. As captain, she holds leadership position on and off the field and sets an example for her teammates. She was recognized as an all-league player her sophomore and junior year. She also qualified for sectionals at track every year she has competed. She has always been a positive influence in the classroom and on the field. Ava?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ava, and I'm a senior at Tuckahoe High School as well. I'm here tonight to update everyone on our clubs and activities from October through November. Primarily, our Tuckahoe School Debate Team participated in its first tournament as part of the New York Debate League on November 6th. Our team won two rounds and received great recognition during the ranking of speakers. Two of our debaters actually ranked in the top 10. The Habitat for Humanity Club also participated in a Walk-a-Thon in support of the Fuller Center for Housing. The walk supported efforts to both assist victims of Hurricane Ida and provide affordable housing to families throughout Westchester County. Our 17 club members were able to raise $1,200 in donations. Our seniors also did an amazing job leading the Cottle Halloween Parade and held the annual Haunted House event on November 1st in the school parking lot. In addition, the high school chorus and Ms. Reedy performed "Hope in Harmony," a World Without Cancer concert. The song selection in Pink Glove Dance were all exceptional, and it was a beautiful evening to hear our children sing for a good cause. Ms. Kase and her students also displayed an exceptional mural now hanging in the lobby in tribute of our 90th anniversary of our school-building milestone. This gift from our students recognizes our community's generosity in supporting our students with this beautiful, historical building 90 years ago. Finally, the Practice ACT was offered on November 2nd, and the Practice SAT will be offered on November 24th. Thank you for listening.
I want to thank both our students, not only for this great update, but also for all that they do for our school community. I know you guys probably have work to do, so you don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Thank you for coming, guys. Really impressive.
Well done.
Next up is your comments, Dr. Goodman, so if you want to roll right into that.
Since our last workshop meeting, we have continued to monitor data and develop plans to respond to the needs of our community. We are looking forward to launching the Tuckahoe Learning Center at the elementary school and through a partnership with ECAT at our local after-school program. More information will be sent shortly. We hosted a very active superintendent's conference day with training and various initiatives. A special thank you to the PTA for generously providing freshmen to get the day started and on the right note. This afternoon, we sent out information for families interested in obtaining COVID-19 vaccinations for their children ages 5 to 11. The Westchester County Department of Health has asked us to do a survey, and they will be hosting a survey on our grounds in early December. We had about 115 families sign up for students to be vaccinated. We also put out other vaccination information. We were told today that the village will be doing a vaccination on, this Thursday. If families have questions, it's an individual decision, and they are encouraged to consult with their family physician. We have celebrated wins with our track team, our debate team, and as you probably already know, our varsity football team. Congratulations to our Tigers, who are the Section 1 Class D champions. Congratulations to Michael Myers, named the team's, of the game's MVP. Thanks to our incredible coaching staff, head coach John Diarcio, assistant coaches Kevin Chen and Joseph McDermott, and Phil Triglier. Thanks to our cheerleading squad that cheered us to victory. Special thanks to our parents and school community for supporting our players. We recognize the contributions of our servicemen and women on Veterans Day. We also published and distributed our fall newsletter via email and social media. You can find a link to the newsletter on our homepage under the superintendent's message. As you can see, Tuckahoe continues to lead the way. We are very excited as we wrap up the first quarter of our school year and look ahead to all that awaits. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Dr. Goodman. Next is comments by our business manager, Faith.
Yes. So the capital project is moving along very nicely, along with the timeline. The architects are working on refining the details for the middle school, high school, library, and cafeteria. Cottle is just about ready to be submitted to SED, and it's very exciting. Lots of good things coming in the project. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, this is our first recognition of the audience. For any comments about agenda items? Do we have any takers for agenda items?
Did anything to do with what Dr. Goodman discussed?
Well, that's more comments. So, it's more comments. So I think I'd say that for the end, if he has something to say. This is just for agenda items that we're going to vote on. All right. Okay, Susan Mealy?
Hi, everyone. I'm Susan Mealy. I'm the PTA president. Thank you, Board and Administration, for all that you do. I was very happy to hear about the discussion at the last Board of Ed meeting about academic intervention and broached this subject with our PTA Executive Board at our meeting last week, and we are positioning ourselves to support that endeavor, so I'd be happy to speak with you, Dr. Goodman, about how we might do that. Recently, we've been busy. October was a very busy month. We hosted the Cottle Halloween Party, which was reimagined this year as a walk-through outdoor event. The Cottle Committee also decorated the inside of Cottle for Halloween. Our middle school committee gave out Halloween goodie bags to the middle school students, and the high school committee did the same up there. And in addition, we also hosted our Scholastic Book Fair at Cottle, which was very well-supported, both in terms of all the community members who volunteered to help us implement the event, and the purchases helped raise money for the PTA. And we were also able to raise Scholastic bucks, which are dollars we could spend through Scholastic that we were able to use to purchase books to donate to the Cottle Library. So there are multiple benefits to supporting that, including boosting literacy. Our cultural arts committee hosted a virtual presentation of our annual Native American educational event for the 4th grade. And as Dr. Goodman mentioned, our Community School Relations Committee provided breakfast to the school staff on the superintendent's conference day. Our high school committee hosted a virtual meeting with Dr. Linehan for parents and caregivers who wanted to have a town hall-type forum with him. And our Ways and Means Committee hosted Picture Retake Day at Cottle and Family Photo Shoot at Cottle, which also was a fundraiser. Coming up, this Thursday is our first PTA general meeting of the year, which is going to be done virtually, this Thursday at 7:30. And our guest speaker is Mr. Chris Keough, who is going to enlighten the community about the, paint a greater picture of the details of his job. We hear him report at these forums and others, but we want to get to know him a little bit better and facilitate a Q&amp;A, so we hope that everybody will join us for that. And also coming up, the week of November 29th, we have the Holiday Boutique at Cottle, which also is a fundraiser, and that allows Cottle students to go shopping for family gifts that are priced nominally, so they can take pride in giving gifts to their family. And then also coming up on Tuesday, November 30th, though not a PTA event, it is a national day called Giving Tuesday, which is dedicated to encouraging people to support community, or not necessarily community, but nonprofit organizations. And I would like to encourage our community to remember the Tuckahoe PTA on that day, and we'll issue a reminder. But all donations to the PTA are reinvested in our children and community, so there are zero administrative costs. It's all about funneling money back to the kids, so we hope that everybody will continue to support us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for all you do, as usual. Okay, next we move on to our business. So, it's a pretty light agenda tonight, should be pretty quick. The first up is our consent agenda. A motion to approve consent agenda items 2 through 9. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Laura, any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? All in favor? Okay. First item is accept a donation on the business section, whereas an anonymous donor, who are grandparents of students in the Tuckahoe community who believe in education, in the education their grandchildren are receiving, wish to donate funds to an established scholarship, and whereas the Board of Education is authorized to accept such donations pursuant to the authority of the New York Educational Law, Section 170912-A, and Tuckahoe Policy 1800. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District, hereby accepts a donation of $10,000, subject to the condition that the donation be used exclusively to establish an annual scholarship. And be it further resolved that the scholarship be awarded for the first time in the year 2022, and each and every school year thereafter, for as long as the scholarship funds contain sufficient monies to seniors who apply for such scholarships, who have demonstrated financial need, who have, who have been accepted into and plan to attend an accredited two-year community college following high school graduation. And be it further resolved that up to five scholarship recipients shall be selected in each year in which funds are available by the Tuckahoe High School Scholarship Committee, and be it further resolved that the scholarship awarded each year shall be in the amount of $1,000 per recipient, and said scholarship shall be paid directly to the institution in which the recipient enrolls. And be it further resolved that any recipient may be awarded an additional $1,000 scholarship for his or her second year of study at community college, on the condition that the recipient applies for renewal of the scholarship within one year of completing his or her first year of study at community college, and maintain a grade point average of at least 2.5 during his or her first year of study. And be it further resolved that the Board will annually inform the donors regarding the number of applicants for such scholarship, applications for such scholarship was made, and number of scholarships awarded, the amount of remaining funds, and the success of the scholarship program. And be it further resolved that the donation shall be held in a separate scholarship account by the district, and that the district shall have the discretion to invest the principal of the fund in a prudent and reasonable manner in accordance with the Board of Education Investment Policy, Policy 6240, and accompanying Regulation 6240-R. And be it further resolved that the district may accept additional contributions from time to time to the scholarship fund and dispense awards consistent with the scholarship framework set forth above. Now therefore, and be it resolved that the scholarship fund is hereby created entitled Community College Scholarship Fund. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, Laura, comments?
Okay. This donor wanted to stay anonymous. They contacted the school district, wishing to make the donation of the $10,000 to support scholarship assistance for current high school seniors who plan to attend community college following graduation. The gift will be made directly to the school if approved tonight in 2021. What we can tell you, because the donors want to stay anonymous, is that they are grandparents of current students who believe in the education that their grandchildren are receiving in Tuckahoe. The donors also would like you to know that they hope that perhaps others will step forward to add to the gift.
That's great. We accepted a similar donation previous board. Is this the same one, or is this an additional?
Seems very similar, but it's anonymous. I don't know.
So it's a different one, right? Do we know?
This is a different one, yes.
Okay. Well, it's great. I mean, whoever that donor is, I don't know who it is either, but if you're watching, thank you very much. It's a great, very generous of you, and it just shows your support for what we're doing, and we appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Very generous.
All in favor? All right. And next, approve an agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education approves a 16-month lease agreement for a new postage machine with Pitney Bowes. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Teraz, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And then lastly, we have personnel recommendations. Resolved that the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves personnel action items A through E as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Laurie, any discussion? All in favor? All right. That's it for our agendas. That brings us to our second recognition of the audience for any items at all. Just remind you of the three-minute rule, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Goodman and Board members. My name is Lisa Jellai. I'm here tonight to discuss the email that was sent out to the community today at 3:24 PM, basically providing little to no notice prior to tonight's board meeting, which details a vaccination site to be held on school premises at Cottle. I am, what I'm about to say, I say with love and respect, and I hope that it's received in kind, but this is the way that I feel. I am especially disappointed at the district by continuing to push this agenda, while knowing there are several community members who have both respectfully and passionately expressed opinions over the last several months that this subject matter creates feelings of divisiveness, not just for parents, but more importantly, for students, and specifically contributes to a climate and culture of otherness, based on the obvious polarization that we see today. While I understand that approximately 100 families have requested this, that number represents about 15% of the school population, and I simply can't understand or support how that number justifies the need to continue in this vein. Notwithstanding, by conflating health care and education, the school district is assuming a huge risk by not only potentially, but proactively placing some children in harm's way. These vaccines are not even approved by the FDA, despite what many believe and/or who have been mistakenly advised by our medical professionals and even the President of the United States. Currently, the only vaccine that has FDA approval is something called Comirnadi, which isn't even available in the marketplace in the United States. That means if anyone has an adverse reaction or suffers harm, there will be no legal remedy or recourse available to these families and children. There are plenty of vaccination sites available in our community, like the community center, and I respectfully request once again that you stop being involved in what should strictly be a private health care decision and stick to the priority of educating our children. It begs the question, why you are opening the district up to liability? Is there a financial gain to the district in exchange for hosting a vaccination clinic or pop-up site? And if so, you should be transparent and notify us accordingly. Additionally, what about those students and parents who do not want to be exposed to the newly vaccinated while they're in school? Additionally, you are completely disregarding those families who did not sign up for this, and you will be potentially exposing young children to those who are newly injected with a high viral load of this spike protein, and assuming that these 100 kids who are recently vaccinated while in school will not be shedding that protein onto others. Finally, the ending of the email was particularly troublesome to me, because the wording specifies, in quotes, "The vaccine is not currently required to attend school." That is, thank you. That is, I find, leading and possibly foreshadowing something that I believe is incredibly insensitive to somebody that is not anti-vax but anti-mandate. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Teraz.
Hi, Mrs. Vasquez. Everybody knows me. Hope everybody's doing well. Just got two questions, very quick.
Just got two questions, very quick. As regarding the vaccine sites on the school grounds, just wanted to know if we are getting state aid or state funding for that, especially with all the incentives going around between gift cards, donuts, and all that they're giving out for vaccines. And also, is the school getting state funding for each child that's actually vaccinated at the school, or just in school in general? That's my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just make sure there's somebody else. Anyone else? Is that it? Okay. Yeah, do you want to address that?
Yeah, so, we're not getting any funding or any kickback for vaccinating. We were given, the Department of Health asked us to do, I'm sorry, the Department of Health asked us to do a survey to see how many students would be interested in having a vaccination site. Now, approximately 110 students in general, I don't know how many families that were, but we also know that other students have been vaccinated other places. We know that there are kids that are vaccinated. When we did our original survey, people expressed interest in having a vaccination site at the school. We, and the Thursday one, the reason that went out today was because we just found out about the Thursday one, which is this Thursday in the Village this afternoon. So, that's had the timing, because, you know, for people who wanted their children to get the vaccine, I thought it was fair to send it out on Monday, since it is Thursday, and some people would have to change their, you know, if they worked or make different plans to, if they wanted to get their child vaccinated. So, that had to do with the timing.
Dr. Goodman, maybe it'd be helpful if you could speak a little bit about how, for the vaccine clinic here on the school that you're proposing, how that would actually work?
Well, we're waiting for the Department of Health to give us the logistics of that. We just had the date. The first date is a school day. The second date happens to be a day that's a vacation day. So, it's, I think, the 28th is the second day. Originally, they gave it to us, and the second day was Christmas Eve, and I thought that that would be pretty insensitive to students in the district. I can't imagine people wanting to get their child vaccinated on Christmas Eve for those who would want it. So, it actually is a week longer than usually is between the vaccines, but they say that that's not a bad thing and could even be a better thing. So, there are sites other places. I think kids are actually getting their vaccinations in other places, because it just came out. But we just wanted to let people know. And the reason it came out tonight at that time is we just found out today about the Thursday date, and we're not getting any kickbacks, or they're not counting anything. I don't know, you know, someday, maybe they'll use the data in some way, you know? Hopefully, they'll use data that has to also do with the number of kids and, you know, how many kids and hospitalizations and all of that. But maybe we have heard that they could use the vaccination probably in a, in an area to make decisions about masks, but that's not why we're doing it. I don't know what there, what, there is no, they just asked us to do a survey. We did a survey. We, as a district, did a survey a while ago to see how many people would be interested in having their children vaccinated on school grounds. Even of those 110 kids who are, whose parents wanted them to, I've heard that some of those kids have gotten vaccines elsewhere. So...
So, is this happening? I guess I'm confused. Are we having a vaccination site at the school?
Right now, we're having a vaccination.
Based on how many, exactly? Because you said some of them have already been vaccinated, so is this based on a 10%?
Based on, based on what we had before. We asked people to sign up again to make sure that we have this right, and so that we make sure that it's, that we make sure that the Department of Health know how many students are getting vaccinated.
And is this something that all schools are doing, or is just you have the option as a superintendent to do it?
I think that they asked us all to do it. I know that some schools have already done it. It's hard to really get dates right now, so that's why we got that date that ended on Christmas Eve.
But that's for the second.
That's for the seventh.
First dose...
So, now it's the week after.
But the first dose is being proposed for December 3rd?
Yes.
Now, is that, is that during school hours?
I don't, I'm not 100% sure yet. It could be during school hours.
We're not sure.
Parents have to be with their child.
Right. So, then likely to be after school.
Yeah.
And is this something that we need, a policy or something from the Board to, or is this just, you know, how does this work?
Well, I went through it with our attorney.
Okay.
And made sure that the district was safe in terms of doing this, because again, you know, the attorney approved that, but if the Board wants to discuss it, that's...
I mean, I think...
Right, too. We talked about it with our Health and Wellness Committee, actually, the last time we met. So, you know, the Board can weigh in on this, too, I guess.
Do, do I have any comments about it? No?
No, I mean, I think, sorry, go ahead, Lori. You gonna say?
No, go ahead.
No, I think the Health and Wellness, because I'm on that committee. Actually, we didn't report. I apologize on that. We did meet, and obviously, Teraz and I are on it. You know, and I think, you know, you get input from, obviously, one being a local pediatrician who's actually doing vaccinations at her. I just, to me, I don't see why a district needs to add a small percentage, as you said, many of them are getting them already, or maybe have already had them, but we haven't had this discussion as a Board, to be honest. And I don't really know policy, you know, we're in charge of policy and overseeing these things. Obviously, the Wellness Committee makes a recommendation to a superintendent, and then you go ahead and make that decision. But, you know, I don't, if it was a nay or yea, I wouldn't agree with having, I just, I think it's something that should be between a family and their provider, healthcare provider. I don't think under the banner of the school. I think the community, and I think that other places are more appropriate. That's, if you want comments from the Board, that's my comment. I don't, I wouldn't have agreed to that, but I'm the only one.
I just wanted to say to both of you, I appreciate your questions, because I hadn't really thought, I'm like, wow, are we getting an incentive for that? So, I appreciate the questions. That was, those were great questions. Thank you. I personally don't have a problem. I still think this is a family choice, a family choice. I appreciate giving people options who may not have the means or the resources to get to some of these places, you know? And we know that the kids come to school, and so, providing another option for families who do want to have their kids vaccinated, you know? I mean, we're a public school, and we're doing a public service, so that's my comment on that. I thank you again for those questions.
I don't particularly have a problem with it in terms of it being an option. I would just be, like to learn a little bit more about the logistics, how it's going to be done, so that, my concern would be that it's not done in a way where it is sort of making other people who choose differently feel uncomfortable. So, if it's being done like after-school hours, then I don't really see an issue with it personally. If it's a situation where it's happening during school hours and the kids that are getting vaccinated is very, that dynamic, I think, is not a healthy dynamic. So, I don't know exactly how it's going to be done, but the, in general, the idea of allowing us, I mean, I think there's plenty of options, quite frankly. I mean, I don't, you know, there's plenty of options, but I don't, in general, have a problem with us providing more options for this, especially now that it's geared more towards the kids, for those parents that want their kids vaccinated now that it's been approved. So, I'm not opposed to it. I just would like to know a little more about the logistics, about how it's going to be executed, in terms of how it's going to, you know, the dynamics between the kids that are getting vaccinated and not getting vaccinated.
Okay. Well, we will be sensitive to that. I understand that, and, you know, talk to the Department of Health. The second day is a no-brainer.
The second day is going to be out during a vacation, so it's going to obviously be...
So, it's during a school day? We can't do it on a Saturday?
I'll ask them that, if it could be done on a Saturday. It could be done after school.
Mm-hmm. Because I think we were going to do the test, remember, we talked about doing the testing? We're going to do that drive-through, not, I'm not saying a drive-through vaccine, but I'm just saying, we were talking about doing it on a day where we end it early, and then parents were going to come with their, you know, I mean, I just, the whole thing seems, I just can't wrap my head around how that works during a school day, with all of the stuff going on, and who they're pulling out, and when they're pulling out, and is a parent there? She not there? Do you have the consent? Who's doing the injection? What if there's an adverse effect? Your school day's still going on, and it's kind of, to me, it seems a little...
That's why I'd be surprised if it's going to be during the school day.
I don't think it's during the school day, but let me...
Oh.
The other schools I know have done it after school on Saturdays.
I think it's after school. I will make sure.
Oh, okay. I thought we were like...
I think it's after school, but I will make sure.
I'd be perfectly, I think if it's after school, it's...
So, I will write to them and say that that's...
Well, to Pete, to Pete's point, I would...
But I haven't gotten the logistics yet. I just have the date.
Okay.
I would agree that it has to, if it's going to happen, it would have to be like a weekend or after school, so it's sort of not part of the school.
Yes.
We're allowing the Department of Health to use...
To use our building.
Facility.
Yeah.
But I agree with, like, kids shouldn't feel uncomfortable seeing other kids...
I doubt it's during the school day.
Why am I getting it? It makes kids feel...
I will make sure that it's not during the school day.
I mean, look at how they do the lice checks, though.
Because it's not even that long.
Everyone knows who's got lice. They walk out with like a card. I mean, to some degree, I think it's a very highly emotionally charged topic, that if we were giving like flu shots or an MMR, like, there's plenty of school-based clinics that vaccinate kids at school. This is not such a novel idea.
Yeah, but it is more controversial, because it's a bad...
I don't think that's a fair, I don't think that's a fair comparison at all.
Let me check when it's being...
No, I'm saying, when you're talking about the stigma.
Oh, oh, well, I just don't, I just think during this, yeah.
I think in New York City, they're doing it in the morning, and I don't know, I know usually Westchester kind of like mimics what the city's doing. So, I think that they were doing it before school in the city, so that might be something that...
Right. I don't think they're going to disrupt classes.
I don't either.
That was my thought of it.
The schools I know that have done it, like, through work, it's been either Saturday mornings from like 8:00 to 12:00.
Or the evening.
Yeah, or an evening.
Yeah, I think it's...
Especially if the parents be present, so...
I think it's going to be after school. And the one we just found out, of course, at the Village, which we just found out really a few hours ago, is after school.
What time is that clinic?
It's in the thing, I think, what time was it? 5:00 to 6:30?
Yeah.
You know, they're doing so many kids, so I don't think it takes that long.
And it's every three minutes, the appointments.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I truly don't think it's during the school day.
Who monitors them after it's done? Who monitors these children after...
We're, there's going to be people there from the Department of Health.
Probably going to do the same thing they do with the clinics, with 15 minutes or a half hour. It's a half hour. Oh, no, 15 minutes.
15 minutes.
I just wanted to get it out there for those people who are interested. Again, and I keep saying it, it's not mandated, and you can come to school whether you have it or you don't. There doesn't seem to be any difference about even, you know, masks or anything, if you have it or you don't. There's nothing like that. And that's all I could say is currently, actually, because I have no idea, you know?
Yeah. Okay.
Actually...
Hasn't been too bad.
But I think getting emails on the other side, too, you know?
I know.
But I understand, we understand, we'd like to hear from you, and thank you really for your input, just knowing that it's respected.
Like, for children, can they be, can there be some kind of a discussion with the kids, whether they're, you know, getting it or not, to be respectful towards the kids that aren't getting it or the ones that are getting it? It goes both ways, not just one or the other, but I'm already seeing a lot of, well, I'm getting it, you should get it, or, or I'm not getting it, you, you know?
Or you don't have it, wear your mask.
So, it goes both ways, but maybe if there could be something that could go into the curriculum right now, where the teacher will have to say to the children, have, you know, do something with respect.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I was going to say, I've actually heard of someone who their child is probably going to transfer out of school because she didn't get it.